On the road. Call the meetings in order. Carl, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have quite a large agenda today, and we have a really good number of folks in our attendance to the meeting, so I'd like to remind everyone that this is being recorded. So if you have any conversations you need to have, please step out into the vestibule. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Tallon and ask her to take roll call, please. Dell Householder?
Here.
Jason Gillespie?
Here.
Carl Doty?
Here.
We have a quorum. Okay, conflict of interest. Is there any items on the agenda that any of the councilmen feel could prove to be a conflict of interest? Okay, hearing none, let's roll to the consent calendar, which includes the approval of the 9/14/2020 Agenda, approval of the 8/24/2020 Meeting Minutes, and approval of claims.
Mayor, I do have a question on the bills.
Yes.
Under the Main Street sidewalk project, as we were allocating another $39,000.
Yes.
Stacia, do you have any idea what we've paid so far on this sidewalk project?
Yes, I do. It's $389,092.85.
That would include tonight's bill?
Yes, it will include tonight's bill.
And as far as you know, that's probably going to be the last, you hope?
I hope it's the last. The last time I talked to them, they said it was, they've received all of theirs, so that they were going to give us. But she said not to exclude a final bill that may be very, very small, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve Alderman Householder, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Gillespie, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Ms. Tallon. Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Aye.
Carl Doty?
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries. Public comment, members of the public may speak on any matter that is not on the agenda, and we ask that you please limit your remarks to three minutes per speaker. If you would like to address the council, please come to the podium and state your name.
It's Sunby, 369 Gigginsburg. I guess I have a concern about who takes care of the property from the street to the landowner. Is there somebody that keeps that trimmed? Is it someone that addresses that, or is it left to grow like it is?
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, sir, you're wanting to know who takes care of the property from the street to where?
To the landowner.
Okay.
There's obviously some footage in there that has weeds three feet tall.
Okay, which could be easement or right-of-way. So, Mr. Sunby, as this is designed to be a comment section, and we don't typically have a question-and-answer session, I've got your question that's been recorded. I'm going to ask that staff take that back and that they respond to you directly. At our next meeting, we will read the answer that you were provided with.
Okay, it's just a concern, I'd like to see it addressed.
Okay.
I'd also like to know, what are the regulations or stipulations, if you have any, about businesses in a residential area?
Okay.
We have two of them. Creating a lot of traffic, which speed needs to be enforced. It's became much too fast.
Okay.
I don't know if it needs to be patrolled or what, speed bumps. I understand.
Okay. So I believe I have captured those two items. As I indicated, we will have staff get back to you, and we will read those answers at the next council meeting.
Good.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone, Janet from the chamber. And Mayor is going to tell you a little bit about her town hall meeting later tomorrow, for tomorrow evening at 5:30. This might be a little bit premature, but I did want to bring this to show everybody. The vision to talk about the possibilities for the future. And this is a rendering of a possible. Main Street Square, destination, Hill City, Main Street Square. You'll be seeing more of this as conversations come together, but among all the different entities. But this is simply to get us thinking about the future and the possibilities. Before I came here, I was told that, once upon a time, that the chamber used to have offices on Main Street. Wouldn't that be an awesome thing? This has, this would be across from the school, and there is a band show. There is an opportunity for ice skating perhaps, six-town homes, six-foot hill shops underneath. Possibilities are endless. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, just so they could start thinking about the future. Because every time I go to Rapid City, and that's one of our markets, our primary markets, I hear, "I was just there in Rapid City, or in Hill City this weekend." It's like, we continue to give them great reasons to come, like we did this weekend with the quote show. So this is just another opportunity. I just wanted you to think about it, and dream it, encourage you to dream it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment. Before we jump into action items, I would like to recognize the Pennington County Sheriff and bring Doug Kimble up for the sheriff's report. Doug, before you start, I would just like to provide you with some information and recognition. So, as we all know, we made it through another rally, and this was a banner rally. And what we've done is we've prepared certificates of appreciation for those individuals from the sheriff's department that helped patrol our city and make it such a pleasant place to be for rallies. The certificate reads, "The City of Hill City, South Dakota presents this certificate of appreciation to," in this case, it's David Riley, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, "for your outstanding service, dedication, and support during the 80th Sturgis Rally 2020." I have certificates for Randall Southern, Doug Kimble, Hope Bearden, William Christoferson, Chad Strobel, Jeremy Smith, Rusty Schmidt, John Edwards, and Brandon Ackley. I'd like everyone to take a minute to recognize that with a round of applause in thanking the sheriff's department for all of their service.
Okay, Doug Kimble, the Pennington County Sheriff's Office. Are there any questions about August numbers, logs, before I go on to anything else?
Questions on your, on the speed trailer?
Yes.
I see it's been put up a couple of times. Is there any recording of the percentage of people that are speeding versus the traffic?
It'll get pulled from the computer once a week. So, the county fleet shop actually does that. So we can pull the chip, take it to the county fleet shop, and they'll put together the data.
So that will give you an indication whether you need to patrol or not? Is that how you use that, or what's it used for?
Primarily used to get traffic to slow down. Make them aware of their surroundings and that they might be going.
It seemed to be working, I noticed, so.
And, yep, we still made two stops in the school zone this afternoon. So, Deputy Riley did, so.
Thanks.
Any other questions? And I'm sad to say Deputy Southern is leaving us. So he got picked up by Homeland Security. So he has two weeks left, so if you see him, wish him well. He'll be moving out to California with the Department of Homeland Security. And I look forward to hopefully the next one to train.
I'll be sad to see him go, please convey that message. He actually told me Saturday, so I think that I might have learned before.
I learned of it Friday.
Did you? All right.
I can get these to where they need to go.
Thank you so much.
Sergeant Hartens is on vacation.
Oh, lucky him, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or anything that needs to be addressed in the neighborhoods? Anybody? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Kimble. Okay, let's go ahead and jump on into 7A action items. 7A, special election, appointment of Ward II alderperson. So I'll go ahead and cover this one, as we are all aware that we have a vacancy that was left by our prior council person's resignation. Under terms of resignation, there are two methods that can be utilized in order to address that vacancy. The first method is a special election. The special election can be requested by the council, and on unanimous vote, the staff would put together that type of an election. It is expected that that process would take approximately 35 to 45 days, not being conservative. But there's notifications that need to be posted and things like that, so that tends to add a little bit to the timeline of how that is done. The other option that's available is an appointment of an alderperson. So similar to the situation that was created last year, we had a situation where no one had taken out a petition. At that time, the council had chosen to appoint someone to fill the remainder of that term for one year. So the way that that would work is someone would be appointed, and then they would serve out the rest of this year, and then they would be up next year for either reelection, or they would be included in the election cycle. So I have always advocated the special election process and the ability for individuals to choose who they would like to represent them. In this particular situation, we know that we have real needs and a vulnerability with the requirements that some folks have on their regular jobs. So it would be more than reasonable to look at an appointment in this situation under these special circumstances. What I would like to do is I would like to open it up for discussion with the council to get your thoughts and understand the direction that you would like to move in. Gentlemen.
Mayor, you know, from what we experienced at the last meeting, you know, with Carl, thank goodness we have people like Carl to step up to do what he does. We're so appreciative of that. Jason was on vacation, and, you know, sometimes we may have sick aldermen, so getting a quorum could be a problem. We do need to conduct city business, so. My thought would be we need to go, as the council's done in the past, with an appointment process.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Gillespie?
I'm fine with that as well, I think it makes sense. A special election, although I'm not opposed, it also costs additional money to do as well on top of it. And while on vacation, I drove through some of the area that Carl was fighting in, and that stuff is, looks nasty. So, I appreciate firefighters, too.
Thank you, Alderman Gillespie. Alderman Doty?
No, I agree. I mean, I've been gone so far, 65 days this summer, mostly in Colorado, fighting fire. For those that haven't watched the news, it's definitely not slowing down, so it's, I feel that probably best to do an appointment, so that way we got at least another body here in case of my absence, because who knows where I'm going to wind up being next.
Okay. All right. With that being said, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Motion for appointment of special elections. So you make a motion to fill the vacancy by appointment?
Ah, so moved.
Okay, so Alderman Gillespie makes the motion to fill the vacancy by appointment. Is there a second? There is a second, Alderman Doty. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. So moving on to action item 7B, Ward II appointment candidates. Gentlemen, are there any candidates for the Ward II appointment?
Mayor, as being one of the representatives of Ward II, we have a candidate that is qualified, that has registered voter of Ward II, has come forward on his own condition to seek this position, and thus I would like to nominate Gary Alk for the council seat for Ward II.
Okay, so I have a nomination for Gary Alk. Are there any other nominations, council? Okay, hearing no other nominations, do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Alk as alderman Ward II?
So moved, Mayor.
I have, I have a motion. Alderman Householder, second Alderman Gillespie. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia. Carl Doty?
Yes.
Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Motion carried, all in favor. Mr. Alk, would you please step forward? You go ahead. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the state of South Dakota
and the state of South Dakota
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city alderman
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of city alderman
for the city of Hill City
for the city of Hill City
Pennington County
Pennington County
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
Congratulations. You can just sign it. And you're going to have a packet for it. Okay. Okay, let's move on then to action item 7C, wine brew and barbecue reimbursement. Mr. McNacken, could you please walk us through it? Or Stacia, I'm not sure who's prepared.
Probably more Stacia's, but, so we had, you know, the wine brew and barbecue event just occurred in the past few weeks. With the money that was earmarked for them, it was $12,500 for marketing, for advertisement. And so what was requested of them is the bills of what they spent that money on. So in your packet, I think you received a secondary packet with kind of the detail of what those were. So the amount that was budgeted was $12,005. I believe that the amount that was submitted actually exceeded that. But we didn't receive any special correspondence from them seeking for that overage part of it. That was above $12,005. And so, Stacia, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so they've already paid these vendors, and we're just reimbursing them as a group.
Yes.
Just to make sure that we're clear on that. So I know that there's, within the packet itself, I think there's a few questions as to what the advertising dollars were utilized for, and I think that will flesh itself out in the conversation, so I won't get into that too much. During the event, there was also some damage that was caused to the fence that was around the tennis court. I know we had removed the chain link around the tennis court. The event people actually removed some of the poles during the event without any discussion with the city. So what we've done is, the mayor and I and Stacia sat down with Shane Alexander and Emily Wheeler, who were the supervisors or managers of the event. We sat down with both of them last week and kind of went over some of the concerns about the event and some of the things that had transpired. We talked about those poles being removed. And we didn't get so much into the advertising part of it, so I don't want to get too far off of the core question here. But with the posts, I know that we set aside this money, the $12,500 for that. Essentially, if we wanted those posts to be put back to kind of where they were, I asked Travis to put together kind of a number of what it would cost our city staff to put it back together. That number's about like $350. Again, with the bid board project, that whole tennis court area is kind of scheduled for remodeling in the future, but that's down the path. We kind of had some other ideas of utilization of that space, and by removing those posts kind of altered the reality of that. So, anyway, I think we need to take that into consideration, that $350 as it relates to this request. Also, within the bills themselves, and maybe I think the mayor is more up to speed on the bills themselves than I, but there's some concerns about what the advertising dollars were used for. So, again, the budgeted dollar amounts is $12,005. Depending on what's submitted in, there's no guarantee that that's going to be reimbursed unless you so choose to do that. So, I guess that's where I'll leave it for discussion.
Okay, before I turn it over to the council for further discussion, is there any public comment on this? Okay?
I was going to speak on this tonight. But I've gone to some of the BID meetings, and when you were doing the senior project, they had a complete module plan, and part of it was to tear out that parking space anyway. And there was some conversations, it'd be nice if the community could, you know, clear it out for us. Now, I'm going to address this to Brett. What, what other things have you talked about that I haven't seen? I mean, I don't have gone to every minute, minutes. But that was at the big meeting where they were putting together architects' plans. So, what is it so important that we're not disclosing what are you going to use a parking lot for? Because it was supposed to be used, converted to a parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Brett, can you go ahead and?
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no secret, I guess, to what it would be used for. I mean, currently, we're using it for parking. I think the main thing with, we made a conscious effort to leave those posts in place after we took the chain link down, for a few reasons. One, it helps to define where people need to drive into the lot and exit the lot, so that they're not driving on the grass in front of the senior center. We're down that little hill to the angle parking. We wanted to keep cars kind of contained in there. And so now, the way it is with those posts removed, people can access from different directions, I suppose. Not that that's a bad thing, but when you're trying to route traffic through a certain flow, that's one of the reasons.
Were there stumps still up in that front? We've had caution.
On, on the alley side, all those posts were removed. And we had those there for a reason, because we wanted them to enter and exit in one kind of defined area. So that was just one part of it. The other part was the ability to hang signs on it. I had some no parking signs for the alleyway, utilizing that as a regulatory thing. And those got removed. And then there was also discussion of being able to attach canopies, like shade canopies or something over the top, and repurpose that chain link fence for a different reason.
Well, I don't think that was.
So, the bigger picture, the bigger picture is this, is that eventually, according to the bid board plan, that is all going to get redone. But that's not where we're at right now. And, and the fact that an event came to the city, asked for special permission to do a special event, and then took it upon themselves to alter city property without prayer or approval, that's a problem.
Okay, well, most of those people are like on the bid board, and they listen to like I have, so I can, I kind of figured it was a favor that they did it for us. Here, we were talking about getting a group together to go and, as a community. So I'm just, that's my outlook for it, so.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Council, discussions.
That answered one of my questions, I guess, is what, what good were the poles and why were they still there? And did they, or did not, did they not do us a favor already? I'm not as concerned about that, while I understand that there shouldn't be just, well, doing whatever you want in city property and suchlike. So, there's that. And advertising, since it's all kind of one deal here, there are a couple of things that I just, just got through, since this was new stuff. One of them is T-shirts, which my assumption at this point is that those were sold, resold, or for sale during the event. So I guess I have some concern or question on that. And then, what else? There's about PA equipment, which was probably not utilized solely for advertising. And don't know that that fits into what BBB funds can be utilized for by statute either. Those are my, I guess, my two questions on the requested reimbursement.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Gillespie. So just for clarification, the invoices that you are referring to would be that from Perfect Wave, which is $1,704, and the description is racks and stacks, PA rental, with sound engineer. And then the other one with regarding to, with regard to clothing is Alpine Impressions. And I believe that's, it's the last invoice in the packet. The description is clothing and various multiple sizes. The invoice is $2,683.80. And I'm not doing quick math, but it's approximately 200 quantity that were ordered for that. Alderman Doty, any comments?
No, mine pretty much, Mayor Alderman Gillespie, same thing. It's just, if we were going to be removing in the future, did it do us a favor? But if we're going to need them back in to work on, have a project in mind in the interim, that kind of messes that whole plan up. And I agree, it's, I really like to know exactly what the T-shirts were used for. Were they resold? If they were resold, then there should have been a profit to cover the shirts that they purchased. Where if they were handed out to all the, all the vendors and participants, like the volunteers that helped them.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Doty. Alderman Householder?
I guess I'm not so concerned about the polls as the idea that they just took it upon themselves to do this. And last year, they kind of pulled the same thing. They took the fence back so they could be without asking. They're just kind of bullying their way, it seems like. I mean, it's a good event, it's a great event for Hill City, but I just have some concerns. Like Brett said, this is an event that they have requested and received special permission to conduct in the city, and they're doing what they want to with city property.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Alderman Householder. Alderman Alk, I realize that you probably just saw this, so no comment is, is a fine answer as well, but would you like to contribute to the conversation?
Temporarily, that'll be no comment.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Years ago, when it started to, I believe the intentions were that it would become self-sufficient. So I would toss that out on the table as well.
And that is correct. I believe we were both sitting aldermen at the time that it had come up, and there was discussion at that point that it would become self-sufficient and not require city funds for advertising support. Okay, any other thoughts or conversation? I'll entertain a motion, if there is one to be had.
I'd make a motion to approve the reimbursement excluding the Perfect Wave and Alpine, as well as getting the posts put back in.
Okay.
Having them put the posts back in, or paying for the cost of the city doing it?
Well, paying the $350 for us to do it.
I would second that, Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion, Alderman Gillespie, second Alderman Householder. Any further discussions?
As long as it doesn't exceed $12,500 that was budgeted for, I have that.
Yes, there you go. With that slight bit amendment, you agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, slight bit of amendment, it's agreed upon? No further discussion, I'm hearing? Roll call, please, Stacia. Dell Householder?
Yes.
Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carries. Action item 7D, approval of transfer of on-sale liquor license to 40 Main Street, Mangy Moose, Jessica Jacobs.
Jessica is here, along with Hannah. I would just like to say, Hannah, you've been part of this community for a very long time, and it's kind of sad to see you go, but at least the Mangy Moose will still stay in town, so I'm excited for that. Jessica is taking over the Mangy Moose, and everything is in line for the transfer, the background check, payments, the liquor license, sales tax, liability insurance, everything. I recommend it to be approved.
Okay, thank you. Council, any discussion?
Looks to be in order to me.
Did you say that, so you have your sales tax stuff?
Yes.
Okay, because the application just says pending, so.
I have it.
All right, okay. It's been updated since the application was submitted. Okay. I'm going to open it up to any public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. I'll entertain a motion at this point.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Alderman Gillespie, is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Doty, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Jason Gillespie.
Yes.
Carl Doty.
Yes.
Gary Elk.
Yes.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Motion approved unanimous. Welcome to the new business. And I echo Stacia's comments. Thank you very much, Hannah, for all that you've done. Okay. Action item 7E, approval of charitable lottery, Black Hills Film Festival, Chris Van Ness.
Chris is not able to be here tonight. But she has put in her charitable lottery ticket for the Black Hills Film Festival. She wants to start selling tickets as, I believe, as soon as possible, or September 28th. They're going to do their drawing on February 20th of 2021. She's also doing it online, and she's filled out the required paperwork with the state. And as soon as you guys approve it here, everything will be in line for her approval for the state. And I recommend it to be approved.
Okay. Council, any discussion? I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Alderman Householder, is there a second?
A second.
Second Alderman Doty, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Carl Doty.
Yes.
Gary Elk.
Yes.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Jason Gillespie.
I.
All in favor, motion carries. Action item 7F, approval of joint power financial agreement between SD DOT and the City of Hill City for the bridge project.
So now that we've cleared the hurdle of the Forest Service and the easement that we needed to obtain to relocate our sewer line that goes through Major Lake Drive there, they cleared the path for the bid letting office for DOT to move forward on going out to bid for the, the bridge project. So again, I'll kind of back up and saying, you know, we've got that wood deck bridge that's been out there for years and years and years. We actually qualified for an 80/20 cost share essentially with the state. The state will pick up 80% of the cost of that bridge. The city will pick up 30, or 20% of it. And so we got permission from the council to proceed forward on this project. I think it was late 2017. And we've been working on the design and some of the challenges with that. Also, the property owner on the other side of the street, the Lantern Inn, as far as obtaining the necessary easements and whatnot. So those have been secured. The engineering plan has been done for a while. We've just been waiting on this Forest Service part of it. In our budget for 2021, even though this is getting bid let now, the contract will be awarded approximately, the bid letting will be done here, I think, within the next month. I think it says in the document, or it might be an email. But then about a month after that, they will solidify the agreement with the contractor, whoever's the appropriate bid. And then they're going to have one year in order to construct that bridge. So it may not be constructed immediately in the spring and get done. It's going to be over the course of the next year. And I think that benefits us in one respect and kind of hurts us in another. One is we won't necessarily know exactly when the, the, the bridge will get kind of underway as far as construction. But we should get a better price because it's a longer period of time for them to work on it. So I'm still working out with some of those questions with DOT and Rich Zucker down in Custer. So this document essentially reflects that 80/20 agreement. The numbers that you see in that first page, and you can see where it says structure a little bit, grading a little bit, these are engineers estimate costs. Okay, so these aren't hard numbers. The only thing that's hard about this agreement is the 80/20 split. In order to understand what the real true cost will be, will be when we get the bids back and we open up that bid packet. But we've already moved money into the 2021 budget to cover the cost share for the bridge part of it and for the sewer line work to cover that as well. So we've got enough to cover both aspects of that moving forward. So essentially, this is just an agreement, and a simple one. This is one of the easiest ones with the state. It's only two pages long in order to say, yes, we are ready to proceed with bid letting and see what we get for prices. Once the price comes back, DOT will be in contact with us. And then they'll have us reaffirm that you're okay with the pricing on it.
So. My question is, once they start the project, Major Lake, it will be shut down, Major Lake Drive.
Yeah.
On this end.
Yep.
So they'll have to come in from the other end.
Correct. Yep. So there will be a disruption of service vehicle traffic coming in. They'll have to route them up Deerfield Road and around. Again, with having kind of the extended timeline of construction, that means that they're probably going to fill that time up with construction. You know, you're not, you're not condensing it to a specific timeframe, but the price would be a lot more if you did, I think. So we're going to have that inconvenience on that bridge for a while. Now, again, we will know more of the schedule once the contractor is on board and what their plans are. Because they may have another project, they may have another project in the spring. And then they start working on this in late summer next year, and maybe they do it quickly and wrap up. We just don't, we don't know. So I don't want to scare anybody, but, you know, it's a fairly, it's a fairly simple project. But they may come in, do it quickly. But I, I just don't know who's going to be the contractor and what other projects that they have going on at the time, so.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Now I'm going to turn it over to the council for further discussion. Any other questions of Brett?
So I guess, based on the estimate, if I'm doing my math right, if we're going off the estimate, our share would be estimated about a hundred, a little over 167,000.
So we've got, when we budgeted for this, we budgeted to be about a million dollar project. So we figured about $200,000 just for the bridge part of it. And then the sewer line stuff is related, but it's actually not part of the 80/20 split. It's, it's stuff that we have to do that's secondary to the core bridge part of it. So I think the total amount that's been budgeted is over, it's like 200 and, it might be 300,000.
No, it's 300,000.
So that would be essentially the true cost. Now, again, depending on how the bids come in, because we knew with the sidewalk project, you know, the sidewalk project came in probably, what, 20% higher than what we had expected it to. And so we won't know the real calculation until we see that.
Until we see the bid.
So figure about 200,000 for just the bridge and another 100,000 for the sewer line repair. So we're in it for about 300,000.
What kind of a bridge are they going to construct here?
It's a, it's a double box culvert. And so essentially, the, the old bridge will get removed. They'll reroute the flow from the spillway, put the double box culvert in place. And they're going to change the angle of it a little bit of how the, how the spillway, instead of it, the spillway coming down and it aggressively goes to the left and then back to the right. They're going to take that out a little bit so it's a more of a gradual flow of the creek underneath. And then you'll have a solid asphalted deck on the top. And there's sidewalks on either side that will be provided for pedestrian path, a more safe route to get through there. I've got the entire plan in my office. Happy to share that.
And it'll be a full width, so two cars. Now, you're not, I know that the old sidewalk was given to the old council members. We don't want the old bridge planks.
Well, we can make something pretty cool out of those old wood planks.
Fire my router up.
Yeah. Or at least have a nice bonfire or something.
There goes my fishing hole.
So Brett, I do have a question for clarification of process and procedure. In reviewing the letting authorization that's identified in this document, it appears that the state will actually perform the bid letting and then the state will be the contracting party. So does the city have any input relative to the, to the selection of the contractor? Or is it all on the state?
Because it's, because it's a cost share, like we did with the sidewalk project, they will, they will engage us with what that price came back as and get our authorization to move forward with it, just like we did with the sidewalk project. Now, with the sidewalk project, it was unfortunate that they gave us very limited time to respond, if you remember on that.
Yes, I do.
And so it was kind of like, oh, here, last minute addition to your council meeting. And we need to know within 10 days, I think it was, or something, what your answer is. And it just so happened that 10 days was that Monday night. So that's the expectation that we will be part of the approval process, so. And that was the same, the sidewalk project was the same, complete concrete was contracting with the state. And so we, we weren't directly involved in that per se. But we had, you know, the, the bridge and the Sidewalker book being designed on behalf of the city essentially, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Any estimates on how much it would take to narrow down that time for him? A year's a long time to do a project like that that doesn't appear to be that substantial, but I'm not an engineer.
Yeah.
And in case anyone doesn't know, I do live up there, but I'm not opposed to driving around. And I know there are a lot of people that live up there too.
Yes.
Just being transparent there.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I think your question is if we, if we compress that timeframe a little bit, do we know what the, the higher cost would be or approximately? You know, I, I had that conversation with Rich Zucker, who by far is more involved with the bid letting and whatnot than I am. He, his take is that there are a lot of contractors that are very busy right now. And they do have other projects that they're working on. And so it benefits us to give a bigger timeframe so that maybe it fits into their future window of opportunity for work, to take a new work to take on. And it may offer us the ability to have, you know, if we, even if we just get like one more person or one more company bidding on it, even if that price is not the one that we take, it just gives us the benefit of seeing the spread of the, of what they think that cost of that project will be. And so he's, he actually recommended that it be at least a year. If we were to adjust it at all, it would probably be recommended to extend it even further.
Let me rephrase my concern that they will start construction and drag it out for a year and close that for a year. That's what I don't, would not be in favor of.
Yeah.
I mean, if they, they do it in a year from now and get it done in a month or two months and do it all, you know, a year from now, I don't care.
So there's a, with our document with the Forest Service, there's a line in that document that says that the construction needs to start by April 20 something. So there's at least that part of it, that at least a component of it needs to be underway by the second half of April. Now, that doesn't answer the question about, okay, it's being intentionally drug on until, you know, the deadline. I, I don't know. I can try to get that clarified, clarified for you. I, I don't have a good answer for that tonight.
So.
Yeah, I think it needs to be done. I mean, it's a narrow bridge. And tightening up those railroad ties and whatever else is, works and replacing them once in a while. It's worked for years, but there's going to be a lot of, there could be a lot more erosion coming up through there and.
Yeah, there's, you know, that, that spillway, and it's frustrating because I don't know that people have really kind of looked at that bridge lately the way that, that I have and the engineers have. But that concrete that is, that bridge is crumbling away. I mean, you can literally grab a chunk of that concrete and you can crush it in your hand and it just turns to powder. That spillway wall is the same way. If you, if you look where the water just starts to enter the spillway, there's like a wing wall right there of the spillway. It's like, it's like a 10-inch wide wall, but I would say like six inches it's eroded into that thing. So there's, there's some significant safety issues related to that bridge with how the creek has kind of undercut it and eroded it away. But I, that's a valid concern about dragging the project out for a lengthy duration.
Well, yeah, closing that road for a year is, you know, is just not.
Not desirable. Alderman Gillespie, I'd also like to offer that in his role in working with the city, Brett takes on the role of pseudo-project manager in these instances. So it's my expectation that Brett will work with the team similar to what he did with the sidewalk project. And in the event there's issues with the timeline that they've been, that they've presented us, or if there's issues with the project, then he will escalate that and we will have some real discussions to ensure that the project isn't just left for another one that comes down the pike or anything like that. Okay? All right. Any further discussion, council?
I got one, one more question. Let me see if I find my fire out here, start turning this thing. Heaviest vehicles we have are going to be the fire trucks, not the fire hall. Do we know what the tonnage rating is going to be on this bridge?
I would have to look at my plans. I don't know offhand.
I just want to make sure that we have something that's compatible, that we can get the, the heaviest fire truck that we've got now or in the foreseeable future to be able to cross that bridge so we don't have to waste time to drive all the way around to get in there if somebody's house is on fire, someone is trapped.
I will, I'll get you that answer. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Public comment has been closed on this matter. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Alderman Doty, to approve. Is there a second? Second Alderman Householder. Any further discussion, council? Roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Jason Gillespie.
Yes.
Carl Doty.
Yes.
Gary Elk.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Action item 7G, special event, Hill City Rangers Homecoming Parade. So I'll go ahead and take this one. I did not indicate any conflict of interest in this as I will not be voting on this. So I'm here to bring this before the council with a request for approval. So there's information in your packet relative to this. And in essence, what we are trying to do is resurrect the homecoming parade. I have worked with myself and Janet from the Chamber of Commerce with the school superintendent, Blake, and come up with buy-in from the school that this would be something that they'd like to see return. And in this particular year that we have with the school, one of the activities that they had had was the carnival. And that is not going to take place this year. So the parade would be a good fit in order to provide activities for the schoolchildren as well as allowing the upperclassmen to have a little bit of fun as well. There's information in your packet relative to the event details. It's intended to be, to involve schoolchildren, parents, and other adults. The vehicles that we would be looking at would include things such as floats, any antique vehicles, potentially some fire trucks if they're available, any other type of antique vehicle that you typically see in a parade. We would do the staging at the parking lot that's across the street from the school. I believe we'll either ask the teachers not to park there that day or by the time we need to stage, they would be gone. The route would take them from that spot down Main Street and really end by the Deerfield Turnoff. This year, that's the best that we can do, potentially extending that route next year could be a consideration. But it would end at the turnoff. The parade would be at 1:30. We would begin staging at 1 o'clock. School lets out at 1 o'clock. So the parade is not during school hours. Logistics relative to registration forms for floats will be handled by myself with the help of Janet Vitovic Bailey from the Chamber. And I would also be working with city staff on anything that we would need for road closures or then any cleanup or anything else that we need after that. There is a special request with this event that the city would waive the special event, the special event fee as this is in support of the school. And lastly, I'd just like to. And lastly, I'd just like to add that nothing says community like a parade. The resurrection of the Rangers Homecoming Parade is a show of visible support for the school and students by our residents and businesses alike. We'd be grateful to receive your approval and also welcome you to get out and show your support by attending. Okay, any comments from the public?
Just to, to augment what you said, we've already had a couple of requests for people who are interested in participating. So, there is support for that, and we do want to encourage our community, our members, our businesses, to decorate and show their green and gold pride.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll close public comment. Council, any discussion?
I'm excited about it. I think it's great.
Okay. No further discussion. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve their request with waiving of the fees.
Motion, Alderman Householder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second Alderman Doty. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Stacia.
Jason Gillespie.
Yes.
Carl Doty.
Yes.
Gary Alk.
Yes.
Dale Householder.
Yes.
Motion approved. I'd like to personally thank the council and the residents and business owners in our community. I think this is one of the ways that we move ourselves forward. And last but not least, action item seven H, approval of beautification committee, Main Street pedestrian benches. Brett?
So, over the course of the past several months, we've had discussions with this beautification committee that really was focused on the new sidewalk and obtaining new trash cans to put on Main Street. And so, those were identified and authorization was given by the council. And thank you, and we purchased those and the, and our public work staff is putting those out. We did purchase enough to put on Main Street and replace also trash cans for our parks and whatnot. So, everything got kind of an upgrade with that. That money was budgeted in the 2020 calendar year from the prior year's discussion of the budget. We had budgeted $12,000 to make that happen, just because we knew that trash cans are pretty expensive. And so, with the work that went on and the selection of the color and the type and how well it worked, we were able to get a pretty good product for about a hundred and $120 apiece. So, that freed up some of that budget money in there. And we started looking at cigarette butt receptacles to put on, 'cause we, we've got a big cigarette butt issue on Main Street, people just flicking them. The hope is that we can get some receptacles, people to put those. So, we purchased those as part of the approval process. And those will go up on the streetlights, and they're about yay big. And you just put them in the hole and, and you're done. So, hopefully that will keep things clean. So, we purchased those and we still utilized just a fairly small portion of our budget. So, then the group started talking about benches. And so, that's what I'm here to chat with you about this evening, our benches. Now that we have a beautiful sidewalk, people are looking for a place to sit down. So, I'll just read the staff report for the benefit of the public here. "With the new sidewalk railings bump outs, pedestrian crossing and handicap ramps being completed, a committee was formed to add trash cans back to this area. The discussion was expanded to include cigarette butt receptacles and benches to expand our art identify, identity with the railing art project showcasing historical photos of Main Street was also being discussed. The committee consisted of Dale Householder, Bob Lowery, Brad Berger, Mackenzie Swanson, Stephanie Ware, and Mayor Kathy and city staff. The city had budgeted $12,000 previously for new trash cans. During the committee meeting, the project area was defined as central business district and adjoining business blocks. However, all current trash cans have been replaced regardless of city location. Due to the excellent work of the committee, we were able to obtain our new trash cans, fifty-five of them, and cigarette butt receptacles, twelve of those, for approximately $7,000. On August tenth, city council approved the budgeted expenditure in the cans, receptacles were ordered. They have been delivered to Public Works and have been swapping out the old with the new, and we'll be putting up the cigarette receptacles soon. These will be placed on light poles within the central business district, where traditionally we have the largest amount of cigarette butt litter. The committee selected an economical bench called the Windsor Flat Bench. And in, in your packet is a picture of that bench. This bench has a lumbar comfort and utilizes the two and three inch slats, which come in recycled colors, plastic colors of gray. The steel frame is powder coated, the plastic recycled, plastic is UV coated and will maintain its good appearance for many years to come with little to no maintenance. The plastic is steel reinforced. We're needed to avoid sagging. This style easily bolts into the concrete. The committee directed staff to obtain a quote for fifteen benches, six of, uh, six foot benches, or fifteen six foot benches and two four foot benches. The four foot benches will be used in it to create an L-shaped seating within the east side bump out area of that mid-block crosswalk. After some negotiation with the vendor, the price we obtained for the seventeen benches is $6,772.80 delivered. The original $12,000 budgeted has specifically been, was specifically budgeted for trash cans. The beautification committee has spread this amount to cover not only new crash, trash cans, but cigarette butt receptacles and the majority of the benches, so truly complement the new sidewalk and railing. Would it be agreeable to approve the purchase of these benches attached to the quote, which is good until the twenty-fifth of this month?
Okay, before I open this up to public comment, I'm gonna allow the council to have some discussion. When they're through, then I'll open it up to the public and then turn it back to the council. So, with that being said, council, any discussion?
I guess I'll put my two cents in. You know, I've sat on this committee, and the committee has done an admirable job of selecting some economical benches, trash cans, receptacles for cigarette butts to help the beautification of it. Two meetings ago, the committee decided that although we do have a budget shortfall in that account, we only have forty, $159 left out of that $12,000. And they're requesting over $6,700. So, meeting before last, they had agreed to go to some of our organizations within the city to solicit some funds and then possibly put up a plaque in the bump out area on that cement wall saying that these people have donated to the city beautification project. We were gonna go to the EDC, Chamber, Garden Club, Quote Club, Senior Center, Friends and Library, Masons and Lions. We only had two weeks and some individuals, and we only had about two weeks, and we, we have touched base with a lot of them. We've only gotten one organization that has flatly refused to donate to it. But others have, the Masons and Lions have both indicated an interest. The seniors board will meet this week. Friends and the Library have committed funds. I just think it's time to let the community get involved in this and not spend more tax dollars. We've spent a lot, but that's, you know, I think we can cover the cost of this and then have a nice plaque denoting that we have, you know, some, some participation from residents. That's my two cents.
Okay. Alderman Doty?
Well, I guess, only, I, I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Householder saying as far as trying to get other funds besides the taxpayer funds to kind of go over this, this kind of shortfall with these added expenditures. I guess my question is, I know we got some, some merchants on Main Street that kind of have items that start to take up space in the public right away when they're, they're open full swing during the summer. Are the benches gonna be on the upper part of the sidewalk? Are they gonna be on the lower part of the sidewalk?
So, great, great question. So, the lower sidewalk is as narrow as it possibly can be. And that was by design so that we could have any available space as far as width of the sidewalk to be on the upper part, 'cause that's where all the doors are for the businesses. So, the lower sidewalk can't have anything obstructing it. We can't put the trash cans, we can't put the, anything down there. That's the, the only reason why it really exists is to allow people to get in and out of their car if they parallel park right there. So, all of the benches have to be on the upper part. And Danny and I have gone out and we've identified locations, and that's where this number comes from, of the number of benches. We've identified locations where a bench would be appropriate, and we can still achieve the clearance that DOT is requiring of us. We had a conversation with Rich Zucker about benches. And, and I won't get into all the details, but essentially, the plan is, is to put these benches as close to the railing as we can. What they want to see is that we maintain at least a five-foot wide clearance for foot traffic. And so, if you add the bench and then you add on that somebody's sitting on it and their knees and legs are sticking out, maybe a foot from the, the leading edge of the bench, we need to maintain beyond their foot where their feet are. We've gotta maintain about five feet of clear walk space. There's a couple of, a few places where that can be achieved. One, just a good example, is in front of Turtle Town, where their building is actually set back. They've got a little, they're not, their building isn't right up on the property line. And so, we've probably got seven, eight feet of clearance right in that spot. Other spots are tight where you've got, oh, like the, around the beef jerky shop or something, where the, the building is right up on the property line and you've got the railing there. You can't really achieve that five-foot separation. So, we've identified those spots. Another spot is gonna be in the bump out on the upper part in front of Bumpin Buffalo. In that area, there's an opportunity. I think we decided we could put like four benches in that area, just 'cause that sidewalk widens out right there, and it's just kind of a natural place to sit, so.
Yeah, 'cause I know that's just kind of one, one concern I have is if there's a medical emergency somewhere in one of those buildings and the ambulance is already kind of hindered trying to get a litter on that upper park, on that upper sidewalk to begin with, and just trying to make sure there's clearance there in case there's a medical emergency, we can get litters and stuff into those businesses.
So, what, if, if you look at the sidewalk today, we've got the, let's say this is the railing right here. We moved all of those streetlights to the upper part. And a lot of times, the base of that streetlight is in about twenty, twenty-one inches from the edge of the wall, so to speak, the new wall. And so, that's already creating at least a minimal disruption to the foot traffic flow. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to fit trash cans, benches within that same kind of shadow of those streetlights and all of the awning supports on some of those buildings in the front, where their, their supports are sticking out. Some of them stick out like sixteen inches from the railing. Some are fourteen, some are eighteen. There's not a uniform kind of a width there. So, we're trying to put all the benches against the railing so that that is impacted, but the five foot next to the building isn't, so that you've got a clear, that clear path.
Now, do we have any more trash cans? Did we get extra when we ordered the first round? Or do we use everything that we, we ordered?
The guys, I believe we have a certain amount that is extra. It was maybe four or five. I don't know if you remember, Stacia. The guys are still putting those out, so we're not done replacing existing trash cans yet. So, I know we do get a few extra.
I was walking around town this morning, and it just, it seems to me, and maybe they just haven't got there yet, but kind of from about the, the dinosaur museum kind of all the way around the corner going towards post office, there's always, especially summertime, there's always a lot of foot traffic down there. I haven't seen no new trash cans down there, so I wasn't sure if that was still on the list or...
So, what we're, what we're doing is, we're currently replacing the old ones first. And then if there's new locations that need it, then we can come back and do those. So, it's really taking the old ones out of service first. But I know the guys are working on that, so it's not, what you're seeing out there right now is not the final.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and I'll just, I'll get with you then at some point, just kind of throw out some locations. I was looking at, just see if they were on the, the map or just a little afterthought.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Doty. Alderman Gillespie?
Dale, were you thinking that we use the rest of the, the remaining budgeted money and then the rest of the benches are funded through donations? And that those donations come in and pay back the city, or what were your thoughts on?
No, I mean, if we, the thought of the beautification committee was that if we did receive extra funds through this donation process, the next phase that we have talked about, I mean, it keeps expanding, but it's, it's worthwhile, is to put some art into the railing, between the railing, and they're gonna put art along there. And any extra donations would go to getting that project going next, so. This gives it, this gives the organization the chance to buy in. Right now, nobody has a chance. I mean, they're, sure, it's their tax dollars, but, you know.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman out.
Security already, already brought up my question about upper level or lower levels, so.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead then and open it up to public comment. Please come up to the podium, state your name and your question, or your comment.
It's Bobby three six nine D and R. Do I understand? If you're sitting in this bench, your back is gonna be to the street?
The, the bench is, the bench is going to be a backless bench, so you could sit either way, either direction.
What does each bench cost?
Approximately $415.
You're looking for donations, that's what you're looking for?
No, we're looking for any amount. If you give twenty-five, great. If you wanna give a thousand, we have one individual that stepped to the plate and gave us a thousand. So, yes.
So, if you can sit either way on this bench, you've got room between the bench and the railing, and the bench and the business?
That's the, the plan. I mean, you won't have a lot between the railing and the bench, but you could probably, you can turn around and, and, you know, you know, you're not gonna be lounging that way, no. But for a parade or something, it would give you that option to do that.
That's what I'm thinking about. I mean, most people look to the street.
Or maybe it's like Vegas, you wanna be people watching, so you wanna face the sidewalk, you know?
So, the one thing when we were designing the sidewalk in, in our, 'cause we had a sidewalk task force or committee, whatever you wanna call it, the question was raised of saying, what is the one thing we like about the old sidewalk? And everybody's like, well, who would like that old thing? It's slanted like this and broken up and whatnot. And the answer was, it's great if you have a parade or something and somebody wants to sit and watch the parade go by. You can sit on those steps that used to be there. Well, the way that we designed it, you can still do that. You can still sit on that wall and still, because there's, there's, the railing has about every six feet is the vertical posts, but underneath it, there's enough room to sit there. And if you watch, like I do, I watch and go downtown. People are sitting there eating their ice cream cone and whatnot that are on that lower sidewalk. But we, I think we also need to add certain locations where it makes sense. We do these benches on the upper part, and if we position them right, they can, they can see towards the street and have their arms on the railing, or they can lean on the railing. And then if you flip it around, they can, they can face the, the business itself.
That's just my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's the way we went without a back on it, so you can flip around wherever you wanna look.
Anybody else?
Given a worker. My question is, will the businesses still be allowed to put their own benches and tables and chairs up on the upper level?
We wanted to have and create a uniform kind of look and feel. I know that there's currently some benches that are on Main Street, and they're currently in that traffic flow that you described. Those will have to be removed.
Okay.
As far as allowing other benches to remain, like private benches, they're going to have to meet the standard of the state of allowing that five-foot threshold of walking space. And it's gonna be really tight for some of those areas in order to achieve that. So, I, I think the short answer is no, you probably won't be able to have...
They're ugly. Okay, thank you.
But is it possible? I suppose it's possible that they've gotta meet that, that could achieve that five-foot minimum.
If they wanted to buy some to match, to add, add extra, that would be great. But to get rid of those ugly worn-out ones would...
Yeah.
Dangerous.
And the benches, and the benches that we're proposing here, they wouldn't work in, in several locations, 'cause the building is built, the edge of the building's built right on the property line. There's just not enough room to achieve it.
Okay.
So...
There are quite a few benches on the east side of the street that, that will still remain. But the east side is so much wider than the west side.
And the, and the benches on the east side of the street are all on private property, so.
Vic Alexander. I'd like to just advocate that we treat a lot of Main Street from Main Street starting clear at Dollar General all the way to the Shoe Rooster. I know we're spending hundreds of thousands on that little one block of Main Street, but we need trash cans and receptacles and benches and that sort of thing down along the credit union and the grocery store and the subway and, you know, that, that, I just, we're gonna start putting our work on Main Street. We don't have trash cans on the east end of Main Street yet. So, just go for the idea of letting the amount of money be the way that it is for the city to spend and then not spend any more from the city and let private sector take care of the rest of it or figure it out such a private sector and everything gets all done at the same time without stalling it out on all of the other ends of town. You're saying Main Street project, but you're only covering maybe one-tenth of actual Main Street.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mackenzie Swanson, I actually sit on this beautification committee. And first and foremost, I wanted to say that they've done a really great job. Dale's on that committee, and Brett's been very helpful, and Danny has been absolutely incredible. Um, but I, when we are asking for these excess funds to cover the benches, and then versus the donation part of that, and Dale had touched on this, we're asking for donations as well, um, and any excess would go to our railing project, which, um, I think is going to be incredible, however long term that ends up. But it's very flexible in the way we've designed it as of now. And so I think it would be an excellent idea, of course, and to request those funds now so that we can get those benches put in. But I do agree that businesses and the community members need skin in the game. And so where I see that going is in the railing project, those art projects that are community based.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I'm gonna return it back to the council and remind the council of the ways that, um, you can form, um, your opinion here. What it can be is it can be to approve the entire amount requested, which is the sixty-seven seventy-two eighty. You can approve only what was left out of the money that was budgeted, and I don't have that exact amount. I don't know if Stacia has that.
Forty-eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
So that's, that is what is left out of the money that has been budgeted. Or you can choose to approve none of it. As budgeted money is just a placeholder, and it really is not a guarantee for payment. Okay? So any, if there's no further discussion from the council, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Can I ask Dale one question?
Absolutely.
Were these benches, when you guys designed this and figured this out, are these only for the west side of Main Street along the, the new sidewalk portion? Or are some of these that are also gonna go across the street?
There'll be four on the east side, but that'll be at the bump out where, where it's been extended out.
Yep.
There'll be an L shape there, but the rest of them will be on the west side.
Okay.
Because as we pointed out, there are some, already some benches on the east side that are on private property, so.
But they'll, we'll have some on the east side as well, so that way in the future, if we look to go and continue down the east side of some public benches, and we'll have the, the availability to do so.
Should be, it's like a company, it's a longstanding company, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Brett, weren't there some on the other side of the street too? Or was it just the L shape on that side of the street?
Just the bump out on the east side of the, the block, and then everything else was gonna be put on the west side. But there, you know, the discussion, I, I know we're talking about the new sidewalk, and that's kind of ground zero, so to speak, because it's brand new and we need to, um, we needed to kinda see what it, how it looks and feels before we started adding stuff back into it, so that we felt comfortable. So it is ground zero for now, but I think the intent of trashcans, cigarette, uh, butt, receptacles, and these benches is, is to use this as a starting point of ground zero and expand it to the other blocks. And go down, you know, to Kroll's and, and whatnot. Um, and so that we've hopefully chosen some products that we'll use, we'll be able to use uniformly throughout the whole community. Uh, and, and, and do that. So this is just kind of like round one, uh, that we're looking at right now, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we give the beautification committee the remainder of their budget to put towards the benches.
Okay, so that would be the four thousand, could you read that again?
Four thousand eight hundred fifty-nine forty-seven.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Alderman Alk. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please, Stacia? Jason Gillespie?
Yes.
Carl Doty?
Yes.
Gary Alk?
Yes.
Dale Householder?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Okay, that will close out our action items. We have heard from the Pennington County Sheriff's Department, so let's see what the Hill City Chamber has to report.
Thank you. Um, you all have my report. And just in reference to our opportunity for a Main Street square, whatever shape that takes, um, the Hill City Chamber is all about amplifying, uh, Hill City, elevating Hill City and promoting Hill City as a destination. So, that being said, uh, in my report, new this year, we executed our first successful Saturday in the park, music on the green. So thanks to, again, to the, everyone who was keen to support us with that, by their attendance, and also to Public Works and, and, uh, uh, support through all of you and through the city for their assistance. Uh, new in August, uh, again, we're all about dreaming big, going for opportunities when they present themselves. Um, right before the July third fireworks, I was contacted by the national retailer, The Gap. You may recall that they had a line of men's clothing called Hill City. And at, uh, July third this year, we were contacted by them because they shuttered this brand, which means they closed the brand. They no longer, uh, have it, uh, or they phased out their clothing, or they phased out all the products. But they had five thousand Hill City bags. And I said, of course, we're interested, send us information, get us a sample, five thousand. So what they did was, they said, um, you can have these for the cost of shipping. By the way, I said, after, you know, multiple emails, et cetera, et cetera, some on the bus while we were going to the fireworks. It was, um, in the end, we got these five thousand bags, forty-nine hundred to be exact, for, at no cost. So we, the Chamber did not have to spend any money on these. Now, what does this mean? This means that they're available for our members or you to purchase. Uh, we are selling them, retailing them for two bucks at the Chamber or at Kroll's, or at any of our members. Um, our members can purchase them for a dollar for their businesses, if they want to retail them for two dollars. We are going to sell them, again, this costs us nothing, this is income to the Chamber. Good opportunity, promote Hill City. So there you go. Come, everybody come out and get one. So thank you for that. Yes, that was a windfall. Um, we, an additional new, we have increased our added visitor, city and state tracking for both COVID-related purposes, which was really a secondary thing, but really to promote and better focus our marketing efforts. So we know where all of our guests are coming from. You ought to see the tally sheets and the hashtag marks that we have designating where people are from and what they are asking for. So in this past month, um, I just had a tally for the last forty-five days. The number one request is the foot traffic. This is just foot traffic at the V I C, it's bathrooms, general information about the area, the CCC museum, uh, ATV rentals and passes, and lastly, hiking, and that's been pretty consistent. And I'm grateful to everyone, uh, the Alks, Mackenzie, everybody who was a part, Blorina had beautiful quilts of her store, everyone who participated, uh, in the quilt show this weekend. And I'm very pleased to report that, uh, News Center One came and interviewed Mackenzie, result of media coverage release that we sent out. Um, right now, another opportunity that we're secured, we are taking advantage of promoting, again, a windfall, an unexpected and unintended outcome, uh, partly due to a lot of our excellent marketing that we do all throughout the state with State Department of Tourism. Um, are we in internal marketing, uh, regional marketing? We are going to take the inside cover of the Off-Road ATV Guide. Why is this important? It's because it's like one of our number one things for people to experience while they're out here. ATV trails, off-road adventures. What's great about this, this is a two-year piece. So for the cost of our advertising for two thousand dollars, that's a thousand dollars a year. Just one little listing in this guide, one of these little blocks, one of these little paragraphs, if we were to purchase that independently, that would cost us nine hundred and fifty dollars. So we, not only are we getting that listing, we're getting the entire inside cover, okay, to promote Hill City. So I just thought I would share that with you tonight because that's pretty exciting. We're also going for promoting our bus tours, bus traffic, so many good things that are happening. Another awesome thing that I noticed, and it just kinda jumped out at me, for our Google Analytics, if you look at our Ju, our August nineteen stats, we went from like almost five thousand people, users on our website, visitor website, last year. This is August of two thousand nineteen. This year, because of our awesome keyword searches and work that we've done, we've got fourteen thousand users. That was for August. So we went from five thousand last year to fourteen thousand. So that's, that's pretty cool. Um, along, and, and you can see those in your report. Um, annual meeting is something that we're looking at right now, we're probably gonna do that, uh, virtually to keep everybody safe. And basically, that's what I wanted to share with you. Um, we did have a, a follow-up, Alderman Householder, you were asking about, uh, a follow-up about Prairie Hills Transit as it related to, uh, Meals on Wheels. Heard back from Barb Klein, and I, I put you on that same email. Um, they're looking, this is for future consideration, a local cash match. The approval was given for state and federal funds, but apparently there's for, to acquire a bus or for transportation for services to people in Hill City who need them, there would be some sort of a cash match. That's just, that's for down the road. Um, oh, another thing, just for your radar. I know Mayor Kathy, you had expressed concern about this previously in, last year, I think. Um, pedestrians downtown sprinting across the street, not in pedestrian walks. So I know that that was something that we were, we had thought about or considered for a request next year, or at some point in the future, if there's ever any opportunity for additional striping. Um, homecoming coming up, and, uh, many other good things, but stay tuned to our newsletter for that, so.
Well, Janet, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you and the wonderful board that you have, that supports you does.
Yeah, you're great.
We were very crowded here in the streets, and I'm looking at, um, the last page of your report that you have here that actually has a breakdown of visitors by month by state. And what's jumping out at me is, is the amount of South Dakota traffic that you've got.
Yep.
So, you know, it clearly looks like people in our own state are the ones that are leading the pack and coming, at least into the visitor office, and I'm sure visiting other places. Can you tell me how, if, if in any way it's impacted your marketing strategy with understanding things like that?
Absolutely. I can tell you right now, we've had conversations for, we've known for a long time that our goal for the last several years, at le, at least the last two, has been to, we, we, we repeat this consistently. We want to bring traffic from the northern hills to the central and southern hills. We wanna bring them here, we wanna get them here to stay and to stay longer. So that is our goal. Uh, how are we doing this? Through, uh, local marketing with our, uh, awesome marketing expert, uh, local expert, Brian Rupert. We are also looking at partnerships with, um, now with Six Oh Five Magazine, which draws from Sioux Falls, uh, and also South Dakota Magazine, which pulls from the entire state. Uh, as well as other opportunities to work with local folks in, in, in media, radio, uh, broadcast, uh, digital, uh, and print with Rapid City. Why? Because every time I go to Rapid City, and it doesn't matter who I talk with, if it's a vendor, if it's a healthcare provider, whatever, they say, oh, I was just in Ra, I was just in Hill City this past weekend. We know that Hill City is a huge destination. We want to continue to focus on that market as well as the intrastate market through those vehicles I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, any questions, any comments?
Fantastic job, Janet, fantastic.
All right.
Um, thanks to our great board and a great team.
Thanks, Janet. Okay. Moving on to the Hill City Public Director's Report, unfortunately, um, Travis is not available to be with us tonight, so his report is included in the packet. If you have any questions, um, you can always contact us and we can answer them for you offline.
Do have one real quick.
Okay.
Over here, it's talking about Shoe Rooster, we had to do a manhole to accommodate their six-inch sewer line. Who has, who's paying for that?
That is being done, um, with the property owners, at the property owner's expense, so it has nothing to do with the city work. Uh, it was a request to stub out some future line, uh, into a manhole, so functionally, it won't affect anything. It'll be there if, if needed, but yeah, that's not being taken by the city.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just for an understanding, we do have our Public Works Department, Brett, that are heavily engaged in that whole bull run situation because there are public utilities that are being touched, and we wanna make sure that we understand how that infrastructure is being laid. Okay. All right, so we'll move on to discussion item D, which is COVID-nineteen updates. So I think pretty much everybody understands what's been in the media, what's been on other social applications, and all of the conversation that's been happening, not to mention the fact that we have started to increase in numbers, um, in our state. And one of the things that we committed to do to keep this first and foremost on our mind is not only understand that we have the legislature escalation model, but also add this as a discussion item, um, once a month to our meetings. So we've added it as a discussion item today. The first item, or the item that I'd like to talk to the council about today and then entertain any additional conversation, is relative to discussions that we've had on testing. So Brett and I have been looking into the po, the possibility of utilizing the CARES funds that have been allocated for our city, and use that as a way to bring some type of antibody testing into Hill City. Um, I've had some feedback that antibody testing might not be the appropriate thing to do. And at the end of the day, we really need to take a look at these funds and not just spend them for the sake of spending them, but understand that this is taxpayer dollars that we're dealing with. There are facilities that will offer those funds. A lot of times, those tests are paid for with Medicare, they can be paid for with regular insurance. Uh, we've learned that the cost for either an antibody test or regular COVID testing is anywhere between a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars, it, it depends. Um, we will work further to bring a mechanism to bring that type of testing up here to see if we could get maybe a mobile testing facility, um, utilizing those CARE funds, um, for either antibody or regular testing, um, to make it more convenient. However, both of those are really lo, there's one located in Custer and there's one located in Rapid City. So before we incurred any expense or went in any direction either way, I wanted to get the council input relative to your thoughts and feelings on testing. Is it something that you feel we as a shit, as a city should investigate in? Um, should, should look to bring that resource up here? Should we maybe reposition that thought and recommend testing in the facilities that are out there and provide more information? Um, is there, is there something that, some direction that we should go into other than what we've been thinking about? What I did do is I asked Brett to get in contact with the city manager for the city of Sturgis. So what happened in Sturgis was the state, or the city decided to use those funding dollars that were allocated to them. And they offered, I believe it was twelve hundred tests. And I really wasn't sure what the outcome was, so I asked Brett if he could follow up with Daniel Ainsley for some additional information. So Brett, were you able to make contact?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So the, the question, the question will be, you know, they spent, I think it was a hundred and fifty. They were, essentially, they're gonna test about twenty percent of their population. And I can't remember, it was, and I don't have my calculator here to do the math, but at a hundred and fifty dollars apiece, they were gonna do, you know, twenty percent of their population, so they were gonna spend quite a bit of money. Um, I will get ahold of them and see how many people actually, um, took them up on that offer.
According to the newspaper, it was six hundred and fifty.
Okay.
And that was about a four percent positive rate, and everybody was asymptomatic to take the test.
Yeah, that was, I have a copy of the, the terms and conditions of that test. Essentially, they only tested people that weren't showing symptoms. And because people are curious, you know, of saying, well, I did feel fine, but I've been exposed now for ten days during the rally, so.
I guess, Mayor, I, I don't see the validity in doing the antibody testing. How is it gonna protect our citizens or enlightening, enlightening them in any way? I, I just, I fail to see the benefit that that's gonna have for the safety of our community.
Okay. So we had a couple of thoughts when we started to investigate that, but then again, I've since learned some additional information. Um, we had, we've got a lot of residents who fared with the. Um, we had, we've got a lot of residents who fared with a pretty rough, November, December, January, and February, and had actually thought that they had had the virus. Well, as we started to look into this further, the antibody testing, apparently the antibody does not necessarily stay in your system that long. So even if we did antibody testing now, even if those people did actually have some strain of it, it wouldn't show up in testing now. So it's, it's really not gonna serve any other purpose now than somebody knowing that they have had it and then the potential of if they have, maybe donating blood. But then again, in that situation, is that gonna be a valuable use of taxpayer funds? When they can do that on their own, if they choose to, you can have that testing done in Custer and Rapid City, so. Yeah. So, any thoughts, Alderman Gillespie?
I agree with Dale. I mean, we've chatted before a little bit on it too. And antibody testing, I, I just, I don't know what that, that gives us.
Okay.
And wasn't Monument Health doing an antibody study at one point?
I think they haven't.
And I haven't heard anything about that for quite a while. So it kinda leads me to believe that it went nowhere. So I'm not sure what the point
Of that, okay.
adding to that mix would be.
Okay.
Regular testing might be a benefit, but we'd have a similar, my guess is, we'd have a similar result with Sturgis.
With Sturgis, right.
We've got spreading and stuff. And so that could help us
Yep.
look to, look to the future. Cause as a general rule, there's very limited, um, recommendations from CDC that are being followed in the community. Whether it be social distance, mask wearing, whatever. I mean, I guess we're social distancing and I'm not wearing a mask. But regardless, that's, there's very limited, um, when you go to different places in town.
Yep.
But I just stay away from people, I quit hugging people several months ago, so.
I thought you just didn't like me.
But yeah, and, and I don't know, I guess I thought of a few potentials, but that, um, I guess I'm not ready to really talk too much about them. I don't know if they'd be a benefit yet either.
Okay.
And I don't know if they'd be able to, if CARES, CARES funding could be used for that either.
Okay. Alderman Doty?
Well, I, I, I agree with not doing the antibody testing. My issue with doing regular COVID testing is you're testing for coronavirus. So coronavirus is everything from COVID nineteen down to your common cold. Now we just had this wonderful snowstorm. So temperature change, people could be getting sick. And we're, as we start to get cooler weather, you're gonna start getting people with common cold. My concern is now are we gonna start raising a lot of red flags and throwing a lot of false positives? Because you're checking for that coronavirus family and it's, "Oh, you just tested positive for, for coronavirus." However, it was just a common cold. So it's, I mean, maybe two, three months ago, while we were hot and dry and people weren't having symptoms of cold, maybe that would've been the time to test. But now as we're starting to get out of summer, moving to fall with temperature change, I just, at least for me, I'd be wary as to whether we're gonna start throwing a lot of false positives because of other illnesses in our coronavirus families.
Okay. Alderman Alk?
I agree with Alderman Doty.
Okay. So we do have masks and hand sanitizer wipes that are available here at Hill City. Um, I have actually had some groups request some of them, so they are available. We still have an ample supply. So I don't think we're, we're in a position yet where we would need to order more, but that still is available through the city. Brett and I still participate in teleconferences that are provided by Monument Health. And Brett, would you share a little bit of the information at one of the last teleconferences relative to the, the swing of the virus as they projected it?
So they're, you know, obviously, they're still crunching the numbers and following it closely. You know, their, their main focus is the population within that's hospitalized. I mean, that's kind of where all of their charts, they're, they're trying to minimize the impact of COVID nineteen on their medical resources. Okay, so everything comes down to an admitted patient in the hospital. So one thing that they're doing with people that are, um, testing positive for COVID that aren't necessarily sick enough to be in the hospital, they're obviously asking them to isolate themselves at home. But they're giving them, um, they're, they're giving them like a pulse ox, something to put on their finger to, to monitor their oxygen levels. So they can do that remotely at home now, I guess. Also, just being in contact with them on a daily basis to see how they're doing. And I'm sure they've got a whole sheet of questions that they go through to, to, to track the change of the patient over time. So a lot of them aren't worthy of being hospitalized, but they're still trying to keep in touch with them to see how things are going. And, and I'm sure that that data is being collected and being used for, you know, to further understand what's going on, at least in South Dakota. The, the projections, they've actually used the same predictive model now for the past probably three weeks. And I don't remember the numbers offhand, but, um, they expected to see a bump, um, towards the middle of rally and after the rally until probably the end of August. And then for September, they're actually showing a downward trend that almost gets down to zero by the end of this year. Now again, that's a trend tracking patients that are hospitalized, not necessarily...
Positive cases.
It's not positive cases, it's strictly those, the hospital demand number, so to speak. I can't, I can't remember what the current population was hospitalized last Friday. It seemed like it was thirty.
It's over a hundred today, if I remember.
A hundred and ten, yeah.
But just from, just for Monument Health, though, it was
Oh, okay.
like thirty or something. So they, in the conversations, they, they are holding steady and they don't expect that hospital population to go up. So they're expecting to go down and it'll be a gradual, you know, recede. So there's, um, not really anything new or groundbreaking. There is the discussion about those tests that are more instantaneous for the COVID virus, where you're waiting a matter of minutes. I know that's being pushed for with some cooperative efforts of like the, I think the NBA and the NBA Players League and whatnot, trying to get, um, a test out there that's more immediate, that you can isolate people quickly, um, that have, show up positive. So I, I think most of the information in that Monument Health is kind of what everybody is getting from the press and whatnot. I don't know that there's anything earth-shattering about, um, what they're reporting. But, um, it's definitely a, a good tool to just keep on top of what is occurring. But it's definitely in the downward trend.
Yep.
If you read, um, online news reports from the big news operators, you'll hear the different thing that it's going up, but locally, it's being reported as going down, so.
So today, uh, the South Dakota overview, uh, on a statewide basis, there were a hundred and sixty-three new cases, there's two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine active, fourteen thousand one hundred and eighteen recovered, and currently a hundred and ten that are hospitalized. We've been looking toward Custer to do a lot of our tracking and modeling as we're closest in proximity to them and we closest resemble them from a, a distance perspective, since we are, a lot of us are social distance just in, in the areas that we live in. So Custer reported a total number of cases diagnosed, a hundred and fifty-five. There's fifty-two active. A hundred and one have been recovered, two deaths, and eight ever hospitalized in Custer County. So that number had climbed a little bit. And I'm specifically looking at the active cases that they have. I think the highest I remember, recall it becoming was maybe fifty or fifty-five, and now it's started to come down from that. So, um, in having this conversation tonight, I appreciate the input from the council. I, based on the information that we've learned and, and what I'm hearing here, I, I agree that I don't necessarily believe that it's a good use of taxpayer dollars in the COVID money to do any antibody testing. And I do believe that we have testing areas available that aren't really all that far away from us if people need to go and get tested. Based on the numbers that Sturgis had, I think we would see something around that when you look at percentage of response and people who actually did it. So I'm not sure that it would be a wise investment of those dollars. We will continue to sit on these calls that we have. We are gonna continue to discuss this as an agendized topic at our council meetings on a monthly basis. And if anything happens in the interim that's completely off-kilter or out of whack, we can always bring that up. We will continue to monitor the supply of masks that we have available for those who need them. And might I add, they're actually pretty comfortable masks. So I'm, I'm pretty impressed on the lightness of them. But we have those available, we'll continue to make them available. I know we already did one run through all of the businesses to provide them with some. So we can do that again and focus that way. We will be able to give you additional information later relative to what we are intending on utilizing for, um, recovery under that CARES Act and the money that's been allocated to us. And then if you have any questions, we can look at that in the meantime. So that is probably our best plan of attack at this point, unless something comes up.
Anybody look at the, mm, what was it called? The Journal had it in there. Um, it was a report from the White House Coronavirus Task Force in there for states.
I saw the headlines and I don't, I might've read the first paragraph in that one.
Yeah, well, it had a link to, um, a report for each state and South Dakota made it to a red state based on population and suchlike.
Yeah.
But in that report, um, the recommendations were South Dakota were, were for, um, oh, basically hard-hitting, social distancing, wear a mask, kinda stuff. As well as the number of testing in South Dakota was pretty low to have a good idea what's really going on. Just kind of an FYI.
Okay.
I traced it back through and found several of them and assuming that that is actually came from the, the White House Task Force.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So.
Okay. We can look to see if we can find the link to that and share it with the rest of the council.
Yeah, I probably have it still. I'll look, it might be on my iPad or something.
Okay.
I can look at, it was an interesting read, had every state in it. And it was a current, and that may help a little bit too. You know that, you know, South Dakota and the, uh, the feds have kinda rolled the same for the most part.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's move on to the last discussion item. So it's listed here as discussion item AE, Street Water and Wastewater Assessment for Planning. And I had specifically asked that this be put on the table for discussion. So as the council is aware, and we'll have to get a copy of the assessment to Gary so he can see it, what we did, um, with regard to streets is we engaged Kayle Mcnebo to do an assessment of streets to help us for planning purposes. So the intent of that was to identify what we have, what condition it's in, and what needs to be done either to improve it or to ensure that we can maintain it at the current condition, and some costs that were associated with it. We will be visiting that again, and I've referenced that in, in other meetings. But the conversation that I wanted to have today was with the council to understand if you feel that there's a benefit to doing that with both our water and wastewater treatment facilities to help us develop an understanding of where do we stand with our infrastructure? So what, what does it look like? What do we have? Specifically from a wastewater perspective, how much can we potentially expect to add before we run on the high side of capacity of that? So doing that type of an assessment for our water system and our wastewater system is gonna be more time-intensive and more costly than whatever we did for the streets. But I wanted to bring this to council to see if there was an appetite to allow us to investigate further to determine what the costs might be for that type of an assessment, and if the council would feel that that information would be beneficial. What I'm ultimately hoping to be able to get input from the council with is what do we look forward to from a planning perspective? What needs to take priority? We are a small town and we don't have factories or things that provide that type of income to allow us to make improvements or sometimes we even struggle with repairs. But if we have this type of data that's available for you, it might assist in the ability to be able to prioritize those things. Maybe for the next couple of years, our priority is wastewater, or maybe it's freshwater, or whatever we need to take a look at. Are we running at capacity? How far do we, how far can we go before we hit capacity? So at minimum, it would help us understand where we sit with our utilities or really the bones of the city. But the ultimate benefit would be to allow you, as the council, to have enough information to then feel comfortable in prioritizing what we do and what we move forward with as a town when it comes to our infrastructure.
So who is going to be qualified to do those two assessments?
So I've had some conversations with Brett and Kayle, our engineer, would be a person that we could look to, to do that type of work. What I'd wanna understand from him is what would we get for a product? What would the scope of it be and what would the cost be? And then come back to you, the council, with a recommendation to proceed with it or not proceed with it. But I don't wanna go down that path of, of asking for that information from Kayle if there's not an appetite for it, to even consider it, so.
I guess I'm not opposed to asking for the information, but there's, uh, we know the wastewater treatment plant needs some, some stuff done to it.
Yep.
We've got a few projects that need to kinda get finished up before we continue to add to the list. If you do a survey and don't do anything with it, you just wasted your time and money.
Exactly, and that's, that's one of the things that, similar to the comprehensive plan, you see it sitting at the table. Having the ability to have this would, in my view, we visit it every year, if not sooner, and understand where are we, what are we tracking toward? And maybe even then start to throw in, into the component, what can we afford? And do we maybe need to start to take a look at different things that we need to do in order to generate the revenue that we'll need for that project? But in order to be able to understand what the project is, I think it's only fair that we know where we sit today.
Yeah, I guess I am saying in part that we might be getting ahead of the game. We just got a street assessment done and we need to address that as well.
Right.
We need to let the high side, or part of the water system is gonna need some more water just for safety and everything like that. We're addressing that, that'll be, uh, you know, coming up and, and, well, completed and provide a lot of that and potential...
That's the low side, that's not the high side.
High side, low side.
Well, the high side is at capacity right now too, so it's...
So it's gonna balance and take some of the load off and put it over there and so on? Something like that?
No, it's just gonna provide water to those on the low side.
Keep going.
We're, we're kinda looking at a new well and a new water tower for the high side. Yeah, and
And well.
And, and the reason why I'm just suggesting that is so how do you prioritize streets over that? Or that over streets, or wastewater over that, you know? That's what I was looking at, but...
Or trash cans or cigarette butt receptacles or anything.
So, I'm...
Yep, and, you know, depending on how much money it's, it's gonna, gonna cost, that's a fair amount that could be used for other things too.
Absolutely.
That we already know we have to take care of.
Okay.
We should take care of.
Okay.
Not opposed to it, but I think it's a little too quick, maybe, I don't know.
Little too quick, okay. Okay. Alderman Doty, any thoughts?
Yes. I actually, where I'm from, we kinda, I seen kinda the aftermath of basically turning a blind eye to infrastructure. Where I'm from, they had a dilapidated sewer planet, they had a dilapidated water system. They turned around and spent multi-million dollars to upgrade the sewer system and the water system and took the tax rate through the roof to the point that nobody can afford it. And I always used to joke that any politician that says they're not gonna raise taxes is a liar because the cost of stuff goes up every year. And by not budgeting for these large repairs ended up costing the taxpayers a lot more to the point that they started selling their houses and moving out because they couldn't afford it. We know we got issues, we know we got infiltration issues. And this is kinda where I, why every time I'm doing a road project, first thing out of my mouth is, "How's the infrastructure under the road?" My thing is, if we know that we have leaky water lines or failing water lines, we know we got bad sewer lines, we're able to kinda budget that stuff out that, okay, well, we're gonna repave roads X, Y, and Z next year. So biggest thing I hate is to spend a lot of money to repave a road just to turn around, tear it back up to fix something. So it's, to me, it's, it makes more sense that if we know that we're gonna do something on, on Pine Mountain. Yep, we need to fix this, we need to fix this. Okay, so let's get any water lines fixed. this, we need to fix this. Okay, so let's get any water lines fixed, let's get sewer lines fixed, do all that stuff first, then pave the road last, and start budgeting that. We know that we need to start looking at wells. We need to start looking at new holding tanks. We need to start looking at a sewer plant, leach fields, all that stuff. So that way, we can start budgeting that stuff out and start putting that money in the pot so we can start to build that up. So that way, oh, water system failed 10 years from now, but we didn't have the money for that. So now we got to come up with X number of million dollars and fix it at taxpayers' expense in one shot.
Okay. Alderman Householder, any thoughts?
It's too over planning, like Carol said. I'm not, I'm not opposed to at least finding out what it's going to cost us.
Okay. Alderman out.
I, again, do know all this information.
Can I have anything to think about it?
Yeah.
Just what we have.
No, from what I've heard tonight, it, it is something that needs to be done eventually.
Okay.
The, the priorities need to be set.
Established. So what I'm going to suggest, if it's digestible for the council, is that we can reach out to Kayle for an approximate estimate on what that type of activity would cost. In the meantime, I think Brett comes with a wealth of knowledge relative to where we are and some of the main things that we need to be done. So I think maybe an expectation that we can set for the council is that we'll find out what that type of activity costs. But in the meantime, kind of take a look at what we've had for prior plans, Brett, and what you know, and what Kayle knows, and what Travis knows relative to the situation that we have, and things that maybe we've said, yeah, we need to fix this, but the longer that you don't, the worse situation you're in. And hopefully, that will help the council then, to understand what we've got out there and how we can prioritize some of that. Is that acceptable to the council?
Yeah, I like that, I guess, because it does put some of the things that we know need to get done. And rather than spending more money to get this assessment, that assessment, and everything, we know there are some things that need to be done, and stuff. And you never know, maybe I'll change my mind tomorrow.
Like I am? Are you kidding? Okay. So we'll move forward that, that way. So that'll close out our discussion items. So a run through of report items from common council. Alderman Doty, anything to report?
I reached out to the fire department, ambulance. They really didn't have anything to report. I know they did Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts did a kind of a membership drive at the elementary school on Friday, picked up a couple new Cub Scouts. So, no, we kind of lost a lot of members of the, the audience, but if anybody has any children, grandchildren, Cub Scouts are always looking for any, any youth, boys or girls, five on up. And then they also wanted me to pass along the, start watching for their popcorn sales to start up here in September.
Okay. Okay. Alderman Gillespie?
None much. Just the code of conduct, I guess. That's still something. It's, it's there. I don't know how we want to tackle that. I can, I can send you a copy to Gary that we have.
Do you think we need to get Alderman Alka copy?
Yeah, I don't want it to go away.
So I would recommend that we put it on the next agenda as an action item. Please take a look at the proposed code of conduct. If you have any questions or anything, we can talk about that. And then we can use the scheduled time at our next meeting to discuss it. And then if in fact everyone is comfortable, we can actually vote it in on a motion. So, Stacia, would you please make sure that we've got that? Okay?
Brett, do you have that? Or Stacia? Can one of you guys send that to Gary so he can take a look at it?
Okay. Alderman Householder?
Yeah. As planning zoning layers on, what, what's happened in the past is planning and zoning have come up with some ideas and implemented, tried to implement them, and just to hit a stone wall, and they got to city council. So the idea is now to try to prioritize the things that they think are important, bring it to council, see what you, as a council, thinks about it before they start tackling it. So they have five, identified five areas that they want to focus on for the balance of 2020. And the very first one is the transient merchants temporary structure code. We have been working on, we, the planning and zoning has been working on this one for quite some time. Randy's gone. There's just, there's been a lot of, of pressure from the public on these two. The second was updating our international billing codes to the 2015, which right now we're using the 2006. So it's, it's outdated to quite an extent. We already have all the material to, to do that. And so all you have to do is do some administrative tweaking of the language to fit Hill City. The third one is a lot coverage ordinance. This was basically, trying to think, to standardize sheds that harmonize with the same siding that if you're putting up a shed, it needs to harmonize with, with the house. The fourth one is a business registry license ordinance. You know, that's been discussed a couple times now at P and Z, and really got some favorable comments from the audience as well, and they're pretty much in favor of moving that ordinance forward. And there's a lot of things that that, that will help not only the city, it'll help the EDC, it'll help the chamber to know what business. Right now, we have no idea if a new business comes in, but they could come in tomorrow, and we wouldn't know it. Number five is, the last one is the major lake park project. They would like to start working with the U.S. Forest Service to develop a recreational use for that, rather than just having it sitting there. It would be paddle boats, it'd be a lot of different things. We can use that to keep tourists here possibly longer if you have some recreational value added to that. So those are the five priorities they've identified. Then they want to know you, as a council, have other things you want them to work on. So I'll give you that homework for, till the next meeting to see, you know, I'll have Danny send this around to everybody so you have a copy of this. But if there are other things, or things you don't think we should be tackling for the planning, they don't want to waste their time. They want to do something that the council, because ultimately, it comes to the council to make the final decision on. So those are what they, they have.
Anything else?
No, I think.
Thank you. Alderman out. You can take a pass. Okay, I'll go ahead then with my report out, and I'll try to do this as quickly as possible. So I have two proclamations here that I need to read, one for Constitution Week, which is as follows, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties and bodies and principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Skorzuski, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Hill City, in the city of Hill City, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. And then it's in witness thereof, and I will countersign it. So that's one proclamation. The second one I have is for the Disabled American Veterans Day 2020, honoring the 100th anniversary of disabled American veterans, whereas disabled American veterans was founded by World War I veterans on September 25th, 1920, and was chartered by an act of Congress on June 17th, 1932. Whereas in 2020, DAV, or Disabled American Veterans, celebrates 100 years of serving veterans of the armed forces, their families, and survivors and community. Whereas DAV is dedicated to a single purpose, empowering veterans to lead high quality lives with respect and dignity. Whereas DAV accomplishes this by ensuring veterans and their families have access to the full range of benefits available to them, by fighting for the interests of America's injured heroes, and by educating the public about the needs of veterans transitioning back to civilian life. Whereas DAV provides free professional assistance to veterans and their families in obtaining benefits and services provided by the United States Department of Veterans Affairs and other agencies. Whereas DAV also provides outreach concerning its programs and services to the American people generally, and to disabled veterans and their families specifically. Whereas DAV represents the interests of disabled veterans, their families, their widowed spouses, and their orphans before the federal government, as well as state and local governments. Whereas DAV has fought tirelessly, tirelessly for equal access to critical VA caregiver benefits and services for severely disabled veterans of all generations, resulting in legislation to expand eligibility to those injured prior to September 11th, 2001, as part of the VA mission and act. Whereas the city of Hill City is proud to honor the members of this disabled American veterans. Now I, therefore, Kathy Skorzuski, mayor of the city of Hill City, do hereby proclaim September 25th, 2020, as Disabled American Veterans Day in Hill City, and commend its observance to all citizens. So those are the two proclamations that I have. Real quick, in your packets, council, you have a copy of an email that was sent to us. It is entitled HC Clowns. And as I thought it was kind of funny and fitting, I bought us all red noses. So if you'd care to have one when you exit, although it was intended to be very sarcastic. The point behind it actually involves the release of public records or public information. So I wanted to make sure that I enlightened everyone on the policies and procedures that are related to requests for public records from the city of Hill City. We've set up a policy and procedure that would follow as such. Requests for any types of public records should be made in writing or by email to the Hill City Finance Officer, which we have a mailbox that's established, finance@hillcity.southdakota.org. The request should include as much detail as possible to assist with processing the request. Turnaround time is three to five business days. In the event it may take longer to process the request, a notification will be sent. The Finance Officer will review and evaluate the request. If the Finance Officer has any questions or requires guidance on the request, they will reach out to the city attorney for input. The question or the request that was submitted in that packet is one that did go to our attorney for further review, and it was determined that the information being requested is not something that can be provided and is not a matter of public record, and therefore the request was denied. As Janet had alluded to earlier, we have a, I have a town hall tomorrow, September 25th. It will be at Memorial Park at 5:30 PM. The intent is to talk about moving forward with Hill City and directions that we should be looking to, and really start to get the public engaged in that. So that will be at 5:30 tomorrow. And just a big shout out to everyone who was involved in all the festivities this weekend. The quilt show was on, as well as a car show that occurred, and it seems like we had a lot of traffic. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Finance Officer.
Excuse me, mayor?
This isn't a question and answer. If there's something that you needed to get on the agenda, it needs to be submitted.
Just have one quick thing. Your last item with the sewer and the water and the streets, you didn't open for public comment?
Right. It's a discussion item amongst council.
Oh, okay.
Okay. If you have something that you would like to make the council familiar with, I'd suggest that you reach out to any of the council members. There's cards at the front of City Hall where you can grab them, and you can have individual discussions with the council.
I didn't realize it wasn't.
Yeah. Nope, it's not open for public discussion. Okay, Stacia?
In your packet, I have worksheets regarding all of our updated revenue amounts for our funds. Our general fund, our total property collected to date, this is as of the end of August, was up three, or 4.31%. Our sales tax collection to date was up 35.19%, and our total revenue up is up 18.44% in our general fund. And our grocery receipts or triple B funds, we are up 47.04% through August compared to last year. Our business improvement tax, we are still down in that 22.6%, which we all kind of realized that was going to happen with the late start for hotels. Our water fund, total revenue is down 0.67%. And to me, that's still, we're okay about breaking even, like we should by the end of the year. Our sewer is down, for total revenue, is down 6.54%. And then also in there, Dale has requested, after talking with him, a report, just an expense and a revenue report, so that you guys could see for each department, how much was spent for the month of August, the year-to-date balance, and what was budgeted and the difference between that, so you guys can see where we're sitting with, within our budget. And if you have questions regarding that, I'm more than happy to answer those whenever you need to.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Stacia. That's good.
Thank you. Okay, now let's turn it over to Mr. McMackin. I think we already talked about the major lake bridge project, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't have anything else to add to the major lake bridge project, unless there's any other questions. Hearing none, I'll move on to Bull Run subdivision. So at this point, the, the water lines are all in the ground. I know that they've been working on Shoot Rooster for the past several weeks. They've got to do the last piece of sewer line right at that, at that intersection of Shoot Rooster and Top of Hill. And so once that's completed, then there will be, the asphalt work will start, you know, they'll finish putting the road back together. So that's on the horizon. I don't have a hard, I know that they're behind, and the main reason they're behind isn't because of weather and whatnot. It's really because of all the rock that they ran into up there, they do blasting and whatnot. So they're, you know, I asked them again about when the asphalt would start, and they're like, we just really don't know. So I would say they probably have been at least two weeks behind on the project. We've fielded a couple complaints about Smokey Drive having potholes and whatnot. We've tried to keep water on there. The site works crew is going to run their blade on there to try to smooth it out. I don't, sometimes we get complaints, and, and we go over there and we really don't see, because we also got like a speeding complaint, of people just tearing through there. And I'm not saying it didn't happen, but, you know, once you go over there and inspect, usually don't see who's violating, you know, and traffic was like about four different cars over the stretch of about 20 minutes, and none of them were speeding. So we try to address things like that. The potholes, when we received the initial complaint, I think there was maybe like a half dozen potholes. The road is actually in worse shape today because I drove it, and that's just because we've had more activity on it. And if you get a little bit of moisture and whatnot, it kind of ruts out. So we're having them work on it. So the light at the end of the tunnel is they'll have a nice new road at the end of the day that they can utilize. The pipe that they're putting in the ground, they're doing progress testing of it, and I know Travis has been involved in that. As of right now, everything that they've tested is passing, so there's no defective pipe in there. There were a couple of spots a few weeks ago, I think it was with the sewer line, that didn't pass the test, and they remedied those and fixed them. So we know that we're going to get a quality product. And like I said, Travis has been in the boots on the ground with that. We also have building activity that is well underway over there. There's at least three properties that have poured footings, if not as well, foundation walls over there. So houses are already getting built. So the work is proceeding quite rapidly through there. It's pretty interesting how it's all kind of shaping together. So quite a, quite a project. I think everybody will be happy with it at the end of the day, once the dust settles, so to speak. So any questions on?
I saw a report where you don't believe they're going to be able to get the grade on Hill, Shoot, or, Shoot Rooster Drive, down as much as you'd hoped.
Yeah, and I, and I, yeah, Top of Hill. I need to have another discussion with Brandon about that. The, the issue is that's where they ran into a lot of that rock. And so it's, they've already blasted, I know one, at least one. Um, and so, it's, they've already blasted, I know, one, at least one round up and through there. Uh, and so I just need to touch base with him on that to see, okay? So if it's not going to be achieved, so what will it be?
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's outside of our, our PUD, uh...
Yep.
Well, we're going to have to do something.
Right. Yep. So I will follow up with Brandon and see exactly kind of what's going on with that. Um, it's, you know, they did, they did boring samples before they got underway, and they obviously picked the spots that didn't have any problems because it came back clean. Uh, and then they've hit rock like crazy up there, so, um, but again, it, it's, it's part of our city requirements. And so if they can't achieve it, then we need to take a formal process in order to either give a variance or uphold the agreement that was initially, um, put forth. So, great question. Thank you. Any other questions about Bull Run? But just one last thing about Bull Run as well. So because of Bull Run, we've had to push traffic behind Curls Market on that stretcher road that normally doesn't get as much traffic as it has been for the past several weeks. Uh, we've gotten a few phone calls about that with speeds. Um, we've let the sheriff department know about the speeds. There is a posted speed limit sign on that road. There's really not much else we can do. Um, it's kind of a tight little road and not normally that well-traveled. And, you know, if we're patient, it will go away. Um, you know, I know Travis is down that street quite a bit. I was down that street twice today. I didn't observe anybody in violation of it, but we are aware of it and trying to do what we can, so. Water reservoir project. At our last meeting, um, Kale was here, and we were talking about, um, adjusting the plan for the water reservoir and moving the location just down the hill, 7,500 yards or whatever it is, um, so that we didn't have to work with that two-to-one slope up on that hillside. The other change was instead of doing kind of just a ground-level tank like we have for the low-site system up at the shop currently, um, going to, because we need that elevation, going to a spirazoid, spirazoid tank, uh, kind of like what you see when you drive into Rapid City on the right-hand side there before you go down the hill on Mount Rushmore Road in town. So Kale did have conversations with rural development. I don't have a lot of the, the details part of it, uh, but he talked to them about modifying that plan to accommodate the new location and the tank. Um, they were receptive to that idea. Um, and so if, if that's the direction, and I think it is, that we need to go into, um, Kale just needs to do some follow-up work in order to make that happen with rural development. And so I think that's a very doable solution to that whole, um, issue of not having to deal with that hillside. Again, it's visually different from what we had originally intended for that location, but it still is, um, addressing the capacity need and the fire suppression need for that side of town. So in that, in that sense, we're swapping one out for the other. On a related note, um, working with rural development has been, um, quite frustrating in the sense that it's taking quite a bit of time, and there's a lot of loophole, not loopholes, but hurdles that you need to, um, get over in order to qualify for the funds and keep things going and whatnot. Um, so I had brought up the potential solution of saying, look, if rural development isn't the right path for us, that we could potentially fund this through a different funding source. I think I mentioned it at the last part of our last meeting. And so what I did is I reached out to, and again, I'm not proposing that we get away from rural development, but I just want to make sure you guys know what your options are. We always have the ability to go out for a, um, a bond, like a general obligation bond in the sense it would be a utility bond where we can get the money upfront to build whatever we need to build that's not related to any grant, uh, program. All those strings that are, uh, attached to a rural development project aren't attached to it. And so there's the opportunity that we can move potentially quicker, uh, on that, just because we've already got a lot of the groundwork done. So I reached out to Toby Morris, who has done our, um, he's with, they're already in company, and they just recently changed their name, but he's worked on all of our financing stuff for the city for the past, well, longer than I've been here, at least 15 years. And so he helped us out with the general obligation bond that we currently are paying on. He helped us refinance that. He helped us with, um, the TIF that, for the Bull Run subdivision TIF, uh, and he's answered a few other questions along the way. So my conversation with him, at least initially, was saying, look, what if we bonded for, let's say, a maximum of $1.5 million? What would that process look like? What could we expect as far as, um, uh, qualifying for that? You know, what would we need to do, just kind of in a nutshell, in case we wanted to get away from the rural development process? The first words out of his mouth are, let me guess, Brett, um, you're working on a rural development process with a loan, uh, to build your water reservoir, and they're kind of pulling you through the keyhole. And I said, how did you know? Uh, and so he's very familiar with what, uh, rural development and the process. Um, he is a supporter of them, but he says it does get a little bit much, and it's, you get to a point where you're very frustrated that you haven't already built the project. So he ran some numbers, uh, for, uh, essentially up to a $1.5 million, uh, project. And we didn't get into the numbers so much as to, we got into the qualifiers of it. And so he said, Brett, I can find the money for you. That's not a problem. The city is financially stable. We can prove that. We've got a great track record. Um, the money is out there. We can find that, that bond money, no problem. He said, the challenge will be two things. One is that the repayment of a bond is, is about maximum is going to be a 20-year time span. Okay? With rural development, our loan for that water reservoir as it currently sits is going to be spread out over a 40-year period. So it's a smaller impact per year. Um, he said, that payment on that 1.5 million is going to be a lot more substantial with that bond, depending on how it gets structured. So he said, that's the best I can do from the bonding mechanism side of it. Okay? So again, I'm not getting into specific numbers here of what that payment would look like per year. He said, the other part of it, because it's a water project, he said, in order to satisfy that, um, we know that there are pledged dollars to repay that bond money, he said, there's really got to be something in your water rate that is specifically designated to repay that loan. So when he, um, got my initial information, he said, I want to look at your current water and sewer rates, the number of customers, and Stacia sent him a whole packet of information. So he quasi did a little bit of a rate review. Um, he came back and said, um, your rates are great, even, even though they seem high. Um, they do qualify for, um, there's kind of a state minimum threshold that the state wants you to be at as far as what your rates are. But unfortunately, in order to qualify for a bond, he said, we're going to have to increase the rates and find that pledged amount in order to satisfy that payment per year. Okay? So that means a calculation of how many customers you've got, um, what your, what your rate of, uh, production and consumption are, and try to match up to that dollar amount annually per year. And that you're essentially would adjust your rates to, um, match that, um, debt service per year. And he said, that could go up as high as like 30% increase in water rate, depending on what you're looking at for actual bond amount that's going to get, um, satisfied. And I said, well, uh, I don't know that we want to do that. And so, um, he offered, and I didn't take him up yet. I said, we need to have a bigger discussion with council. Stacia and I, um, chatted with Toby on the phone, so she heard exactly the same information I'm sharing with you. I said, look, we need to not send him anything else because we need to have a bigger discussion with council as to where we want to go, um, with this. I'm fine with doing a rate assessment, um, but I'm not, I'm not so keen on jacking rates up, um, without a whole lot of thought going into it. I know the last time we had a fundamental revision of our rates was back in 2010, where we had a task force, um, meet up here at City Hall. The, the challenge or the frustration I have is that, you know, let's say we do have this 1.5 million dollar project, and we have this pledged dollar amount, um, that's in our rate that goes specifically for the debt service on that bond. That's just one project that we're paying for. You know, for whatever we can buy for 1.5 million dollars, that increment of cost to our citizens is pledged on that is just for that pool of money. It's not for the next project or the next project or the project after that. And so I think earlier when we were talking about the street master plan, the water master plan, sewer prep master plan, the question is, not only do you need to understand what you need, but the priority in which you need it and, and how to map that out over time. Okay? And we've started, we've started doing a better job of that with, in our past two budget cycles of trying to project when that stuff hits. Okay? Uh, and so we're getting better at doing that. And not saying that our water system are failing right now, but we have a unique situation where we're building infrastructure we only really need, uh, for three months, four months out of the year, and the rest of the year we're kind of okay. Uh, and so it's, it's kind of pulling us in a few different directions. So depending on how much we borrow or, or how big that bond is, will also determine how big that rate increase is because they want pledged real dollars that they know that they can rely upon for that bond to get repaid. It may be possible of saying, okay, well, maybe 1.5 million is, is way over here is the, the biggest amount that we would get. You know, maybe we use cash reserves to pay for half of it or a majority of it, and we borrow just a smaller amount, and then that rate gets adjusted by a smaller amount. Um, there's a, you know, you can stair stepping in there somewhere. But again, again, we need to make sure that we're comfortable with what we're building and when we're building it. Um, this, this rural development process, we know that we're, um, in line for a 40-year term on that loan. For years, I've already kind of put that into the budget to pay off that debt service once that were to be triggered, and it hasn't yet. Um, so we know that we are already financially approved for that piece, and that we can already put that into the budget and that we can absorb that. But we're, no matter what path we go down, um, we're going to have to be able to approve and pledge those dollar amounts to repay whatever debt that we're looking to obtain. Um, there are other funds out there. I know the state has the water revolving fund, and that's something that we qualified for back in 2010, but that was more of the shovel-ready projects with principal forgiveness dollars. So essentially, we fronted all of the money for engineering and whatnot. And then because they were trying to stimulate the economy, they said, okay, here, we've set up this loan for you, but now we're going to forgive the principal of it, so the debt went away. Well, we don't have those kinds of deals today in today's world that I'm aware of. But, you know, we, we're always looking for that to occur. Uh, I think there's lower interest loans that are available, but you're going to be pulled through the same keyhole that rural development has pulled us through. Um, the only other option is community, uh, development block grants, which we don't qualify for. City of Keystone qualifies for them because of their average household income is below a certain threshold. And so they qualify, and you'll see that they've gotten a lot of money for bridge replacement projects and water and sewer development and whatnot. We don't inherently qualify because of our average household income is too high. And it's gotten a lot higher over the past five, seven years. Um, we used to be close, and now we're way above it that there's no going back. I think that's a closed door for us with quite some time. So, uh, I'm bringing this information of saying, look, we plan on continuing down the path of rural development unless we're told differently. Because I think, um, affecting that rate structure as much as 30%, at least in a very short timeframe, isn't something that we want to do to the citizens. Um, we know that we can absorb the rural development, um, project because we've already budgeted it for several years. Um, our only other, I guess, saving grace, if there is one, is we've got money sitting in the bank that we can pay cash for certain amounts and that we can maybe pay on things a little bit and pay stuff off early. We're, we're kind of in a weird position because we're doing well, but we're not doing well enough, and we're doing too well that we're not getting the help of being kind of poor. We're kind of in between. So I'm, I'm researching these things and understanding them, but, and if you would like, uh, more information, if you'd like Toby to call in and share his thoughts with the council, I'm happy to do that. Um, you know, Kale was at the last meeting. I'm happy to bring Kale back in. Um, whatever resources that help answer whatever questions you might have, I'm happy to do. Um, but I, I think at this point, we've got to kind of keep plugging along with this rural development thing and, and kind of try to tie it up. So I'm, I'm open to whatever thoughts or questions you might have.
Is that 100% loan or is there any forgiveness in rural development?
There's, there's 100%. It's all loan. There's no, there's no grant money or free money involved in that whatsoever. Um, I might, I may be able to, um, work with them on adjusting the, the interest rate to match because it's at least probably a percentage lower now than it was when we locked it in. And I think that's probably pretty doable. It's, we just don't have many ways to get that pool of money, uh, together in a, because everything, everything boils down to is you've got to pledge, uh, a certain dollar amount here that they know is reoccurring income. It's kind of like with the bid board and the, and the hotel tax money. You know that that tax is going to be on there as long as there's debt to be paid on a bid board project, and that that project has to be paid 100% before that tax can go away. But...
I expect we're going to have additional conversations on this as we move forward, but hopefully that gives you a little bit of grounding relative to conversations we're starting to have about priority. And we know we need to do this, but we need to understand what's the important thing that we do, so.
So just, and I know we need to move on to executive session, just one other thing, getting back to the water system itself. Um, with this drier weather that we've had and the, and the ground moisture levels going down, actually, it's helped presented to, to show a couple of trouble spots in our system with water leaks. And so before the meeting, Dale and I were talking, that we found two different water leaks in our system that we were able to find just because of that fact. They worked their way through or whatever happened, and those have been taken care of. And so we're losing, we're losing less water than what, you know, we're always going to have a leak somewhere. Somebody's going to have a, a drippy faucet, or there's going to be a problem with the main or a curb stop or something. There's miles and miles and miles of infrastructure. We'll never be perfect on it, but, um, two pretty sizable, um, repairs were made last week. And then in your report, I know with Travis's report, he gives you the, the number of gallons pumped and the gallons charged or something to that effect in the report. I want to make sure that you guys understand that those two numbers will probably never match, uh, the build and, and the pumped. Um, we have, uh, apparently we have leaks that we don't know where they are. We, we have leaks sometimes that are on the roadbed of Main Street, and it just goes into that clean rock, and we never knew it exists. Uh, but a lot of people, um, and that number from the plant, a lot of people water their grass and whatnot. Those gallons of waters aren't showing up down at the plant, but the infiltration is. And so we're constantly, uh, those numbers are being jostled around. So, you know, we're, if you still see us a million gallons off, I, don't be surprised. There's usually a reason for it, so. Uh, I'm happy to chat with anybody individually, uh, about everything that I'm working on and finding and working on, so.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session after a few-minute break.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Moving into executive session.